What they're saying is people in that community, people on Huntsville Road, people in Amelia Diddy. Weak protection without enforcement ability as ordinance is far better than the documents played on the words with emphasis on who has most of the most money and the most to gain. I hope I interpreted this wrong, but I doubt it. In closing, I just make the plea, please do not sign this agreement. At least wait until the fifth commissioner is on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Thank you so much. Ms. Bev, Rose?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Clear. Clear.
Speaking at last, she was speaking from back there.
Any deliverable questions, is that what you're saying?
Wait, maybe.
Okay. This agreement states that surface mining operations potentially may have adverse effects on the environment and the quality of life of those living in the mining impact areas. It states Kemore's will mine according to the conditions of this agreement. Kemore's is a company that does not even exist and will not legally exist until after this agreement is signed. What are the commissioners legally agreeing to on behalf of the citizens of Wayne County? Groundwater protection plan, that doesn't exist because permit hasn't been filed. Mining land use plan, that doesn't exist, permit has not been filed. Mineral processing facility, which we've not even seen, but DuPont says it's fine. Surface mining permit and surface mining application, which does not even exist until it is submitted to the EPD and it has not even been applied for and will not be applied for until late June. Surface mining permit boundary included in the EPD surface mining permit that does not even exist, establish the limits of the area where surface mining is allowed to occur. It excludes the farms constructed around the area of the mining operation. And why is that so? Because this is outside of the regulatory enforcements of EPD. Paragraph two, duration, conditions, brief, transferability. This describes what the county can do if Kemore's, which does not exist, violates any of the conditions in this agreement. These are the same conditions that are included in a permit that does not even exist. Because of my limited time to make comments on this agreement, I want to summarize with the following. Road closing, do we really know? We know in the first application, they're going to close power lines, sloper, Bennett, but do we really know? There are deposits all over Wayne County. There's other mining companies coming in. They may be mining and probably will be mining in your district because of the area that has been identified by Southern Ionics. In paragraph eight of this agreement, county's dispute authority. The parties, Wayne County Commissioners, DuPont Kemore's, which doesn't even exist, and the Tarleton Family Estate may represent the interest of one or more Wayne County property owners or residents with respect to enforcement of one or more terms of this agreement. Personally, I don't know what the rest of the people in this room think, but you have no legal right to represent me and my family and with my property rights. What about the citizens in District Three? They have no representation. There could be mining sites in their district. We don't know. We don't have any detailed maps. I had a phone conversation with Jeff today. I asked him point blank, Commissioner Hickox, will you pay for my well if it goes dry due to the mining effects of any mining company? He said, Mrs. Rush, I have already answered that question at the EPD meeting. That is outside of our regulatory statutes. We cannot make anybody, I don't care if it's included in a permit, if it's included in stone, we cannot make anybody pay to repair your well. He said furthermore, I'm kind of tired of being caught in the middle between Wayne County and the surface mining because we have, we don't have the powers that you guys are looking for. Why would your county attorney state that this board will never pass an ordinance? An ordinance that will save money, be enforceable, and protect all of the citizens of Wayne County? If this board passes this agreement, concerned neighbors of Wayne County will respond accordingly. If this board willingly and knowingly gives away our property rights, we will respond accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cox. You want to put a PA, add number nine, consent agenda? Do you have a motion to move, did you consent again?
I have a motion, a further consent agenda.
Second, uh, Mr. Wright? Thank you. Any question?
Um. Number one, number one. We're sure of that?
Yes.
Are you doing that?
Yes.
Because then that'll change the application. Then that'll change the application for the.
Yeah, we addressed it. Yeah, we addressed it. Good. Yeah. Well, that's it. Good afternoon. Okay. Yeah, motion second. Is there further question? Colorado, please.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item B, Mr. Elman, that's for all update on Lake Grace.
Yes, sir. Uh, I have to inquire to Larry Miles about the environmental impact of building the Lake Grace beach that we discussed. Uh, permitting cost was as follows. If we do a beach that's located at least 25 feet from the edge of the lake, permitting cost would be $1,000. If the beach is located on the edge of the lake, that is right up to the water's edge or lake edge, the permitting cost would be $1,500. If we do a beach in sand that extends into the lake, then you're looking at $6,000 per permitting and $12,000 for wet and trunks. So, $1,500 is, we put the beach half the water's edge.
If, I'm just clarifying, Mr. Elman, if the beach, the sand, whatever we decide to use, the dry edge or the water's edge, we're looking at a $1,500 permit.
Yes, sir. Let me clarify, to the edge of the grass. Yes, sir. That's basically it. And, uh, would be fairly simple, it is expensive to do that.
Okay. And we, just to clarify for the public, we can use our own truck to plant somewhere. So, the expense on this thing, if we vote to proceed with a, with an application, it will be very minimal. We have also, the commissioners that you guys don't mind, I think we've got our county maintenance guy, one of the next things on his agenda is building some pavilions for the people out there on that same side of the lake, just to give you guys a made of what's going on out there. Ma'am, I will make a motion, if it's needed, that we get our administrator, if there's any returns, to get the money to give us the $1,500 permit to get the beach at edge of the lake. Did I word that correctly for you?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any other question? Colorado, please.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Okay. This is, uh... New business. I have made a sort of approval of a surface mining agreement. It's a pleasure, gentlemen.
I made a motion to accept that.
Does the motion accept? Second?
Y'all second now.
Does it second? Are there any questions at this time?
No.
Any question? Colorado, please.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, a new business, a sort of approval of a 2015 resurfacing project. This is a meek, a meek, and, uh, Mr. Elman, I think that's you, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You'll have to, maybe this in your package, yes?
I think you do.
Anyway, we, uh, we have put out a bid, a resurfacing, a number of rubbers in Wayne County.
Let's, let's, anybody speaking, let's wait this minute, so we can fill the room. Okay, Mr. Elman, please.
Uh, we have put out a bid, a resurfacing, a number of rubbers in Wayne County. Uh, the rubbers, I guess we didn't package, just, uh, we can give it to you.
I'm eleven B.
Mr. Elman, give me the, um, I know we have a lot of money that we have, a lot to take care of stuff on this. So, where does this money come from?
This is out of the meek, the state of Georgia, this is put in for a resurfacing welfare, whether it's structured by the, we have to, we have to match with that. And, uh, you have that full and that's listed in our year one, you.
Is that separate from the money?
Sure.
That's separate from the money that we have individually?
Yes, so this is separate.
Separate responsibility. This is something that's not only had on this.
Yes, so this, this is a yearly thing that we get. We generally get, uh, six hundred fifty or so thousand probably stayed under the big program and, uh, we haven't put a 10% match with that. That's part of this T-Splus funding program. And, uh, anyway, we, uh, we sent out, uh, or we had rather have six people or six businesses pick up the packages when we had two respond. Uh, that was East Coast Asphalt and Georgia Asphalt Producers, uh, the J. Hires Company. And they came in at $979,787.23 for this resurfacing package. And you look at the bottom of that first page, you'll see that there's Wayne County and meek funding plus 10%. And, uh, then when we break down those numbers up there, Wayne County is part of this with $669,161.2. That means some excess money in there. Sometimes these projects run a little bit more than anticipated and they have to do some additional level or something of that nature. But if there's funds left over, we can do less than additional projects that are going to pass to utilize that with some focus.
Mr. Elman, I'm just curious, got a question, really, really, kind of not exactly related to guys don't mind. The other, the other bid that out there, who made sure it was all an acceptable timeframe for them to get it?
Yes, sir.
To get their bid together? I just, the reason I'm asking is, is some of these guys, I know the availability of work out there, they put in their bid, I could just, is that typical from some of these guys?
Yes, it's just not unusual in this section. Uh, this is going to be a lot of, uh, local hot mix asphalt and, uh, and J. Hires is hard to compete with.
Do you answer my question?
That, that's places for a lot of stuff.
Do you answer my question? Is there a difference in quality in these two bids?
Uh, no, sir, not really. Uh, they, they, uh, they work for, for, they work for J. Hires. Good profit.
I think he's doing the farmer market.
Uh, he is doing that. He's done some research and forced the asphalt. Uh, and anyway, the, uh, Oda wanted to piggyback their bid with us and that's their $26,000 showing there. That was their meek and match. And then down at the bottom, that, uh, Collins Loop, uh, that, uh, project, uh, we had TIA funds of an amount of $403,259. That was, uh, just part of this contract prorated out, uh, for that, uh, project is $286,151. Uh, if everything comes in according to the estimate numbers, that $117,000 cannot be reallocated. That goes back into that general pot. It's just because of the nature of it. Reasons for these estimate differences and that much being left on the table, so to speak, is we did these, uh, courseback estimates, uh, a number of, you know, a few years ago and, uh, and we, the numbers were set kind of high anticipating inflation, so, uh, so they, they sell the gift cards. Uh, but based on, uh, based on the bid we received, I recommend that we go with the Georgia Asphalt Producers at the $979,787.23.
Okay. Any other? Just one more, the TIA, the, uh, money that we sent back in TIA, is my understanding that at the end of this TIA, that money that's sent back, that money will be dispersed by the population or?
It does fit the district.
Yeah.
No, I heard that it fits the district. You are not planning to.
Did I say what? He thought I went to sleep.
Yes, sir. It does get redistributed.
You try.
And we hope everybody's turning the sun back in.
I'm interested in what? Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we go on Mr. Elman's recommendation.
I second it.
Does the motion second? Any other question? Colorado, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item B, Mr. Elman, that's for all update on Lake Grace.
Yes, sir. Uh, I have to inquire to Larry Miles about the environmental impact of building the Lake Grace beach that we discussed. Uh, permitting cost was as follows. If we do a beach that's located at least 25 feet from the edge of the lake, permitting cost would be $1,000. If the beach is located on the edge of the lake, that is right up to the water's edge or lake edge, the, uh, permitting cost would be $1,500. If we do a beach in sand that extends into the lake, then you're looking at, uh, $6,000 per permitting and $12,000 for wet and trunks. So, uh, $1,500 is, we put the beach half the water's edge.
If, I'm just clarifying, Mr. Elman, if the, if the beach, the sand, whatever we decide to use, the dry edge or the water's edge, we're looking at a $1,500 permit.
Yes, sir. And let me clarify, to the edge of the grass.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That's, that's basically it. And, uh, would be, uh, fairly simple, it is expensive to do that.
Okay. And we, just to clarify for the public, we can use our own truck to plant somewhere. So, the expense on this thing, if we vote to proceed with a, with an application, it will be very minimal. Uh, we have also, uh, commissioners that you guys don't mind, I think we've got our county maintenance guy, one of the next things on his agenda is building some pavilions for the people out there on that same side of the lake, just to give you guys a made of what's going on out there. Uh, ma'am, I will make a motion, if it's needed, that we get our administrator, if there's any returns, to get the money to give us the $1,500 permit to get the beach at edge of the lake. Did I word that correctly for you?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any other question? Colorado, please.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, a new business, a sort of approval of a 2015 resurfacing project. This is a meek, a meek, and, uh, Mr. Elman, I think that's you, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You'll have to, maybe this in your package, yes?
I think you do.
Anyway, we, uh, we have put out a bid, a resurfacing, a number of rubbers in Wayne County. Uh, the rubbers, I guess we didn't package, just, uh, we can give it to you.
I'm eleven B.
Mr. Elman, give me the, um, I know we have a lot of money that we have, a lot to take care of stuff on this. So, where does this money come from?
This is out of the meek, the state of Georgia, this is put in for a resurfacing welfare, whether it's structured by the, we have to, we have to match with that. And, uh, you have that full and that's listed in our year one, you.
Is that separate from the money?
Sure.
That's separate from the money that we have individually?
Yes, so this is separate.
Separate responsibility. This is something that's not only had on this.
Yes, so this, this is a yearly thing that we get. We generally get, uh, 650 or so thousand probably stayed under the, uh, the meek program and, uh, we haven't put a 10% match with that. That's part of this T-Splus funding program. And, uh, anyway, we, uh, we sent out, uh, or we had rather have six people or six businesses pick up the packages when we had two respond. Uh, that was East Coast Asphalt and Georgia Asphalt Producers, uh, the J. Hires Company. And they came in at $979,787.23 for this, uh, resurfacing package. And you look at the bottom of that first page, you'll see that there's, uh, Wayne County and meek funding plus 10%. And, uh, then when we break down those numbers up there, uh, Wayne County is part of this with $669,161.2. That means some excess money in there. Sometimes these projects run a little bit more than anticipated and they have to do some additional level or something of that nature. But if there's funds left over, we can do less than additional projects that are going to pass to utilize that with some focus.
Mr. Elman, I'm just curious, got a question, really, really, kind of not exactly related to guys don't mind. The other, the other bid that out there, who made sure it was all an acceptable timeframe for them to get it?
Yes, sir.
To get their bid together? I just, the reason I'm asking is, is some of these guys, I know the availability of work out there, they put in their bid, I could just, kind of, is that typical from some of these guys?
Yes, it's just not unusual in this section. Uh, this is going to be a lot of, uh, local hot mix asphalt and, uh, and J. Hires is hard to compete with.
Do you answer my question?
That, that's places for a lot of stuff.
Do you answer my question? Is there a difference in quality in these two bids?
Uh, no, sir, not really. Uh, they, they, uh, they work for, for, they work for J. Hires. Good profit.
I think he's doing the farmer market.
Uh, he is doing that. He's done some resurfacing for us, the asphalt. Uh, and anyway, the, uh, Oda wanted to piggyback their bid with us and that's their $26,000 showing there. That was their meek and match. And then down at the bottom, that, uh, Collins Loop, uh, that, uh, project, uh, we had TIA funds of an amount of $403,259. That was, uh, just part of this contract prorated out, uh, for that, uh, project is $286,151. Uh, if everything comes in according to the estimate numbers, that $117,000 cannot be reallocated. That goes back into that general pot. It's just because of the nature of it. Uh, reasons for these estimate differences and that much being left on the table, so to speak, is we did these, uh, courseback estimates, uh, a number of, you know, a few years ago and, uh, and we, the numbers were set kind of high anticipating inflation, so, uh, so they, they sell the gift cards. Uh, but based on, uh, based on the bid we received, I recommend that we go with the Georgia Asphalt Producers at the $979,787.23.
Okay. Any other? Just one more, the TIA, the, uh, money that we sent back in TIA, is my understanding that at the end of this TIA, that the money that's sent back, that money will be dispersed by the population or?
It does fit the district.
Yeah.
No, I heard that it fits the district. You are not planning to.
Did I say what? He thought I went to sleep.
Yes, sir. It does get redistributed.
You try.
And we hope everybody's turning the sun back in.
I'm interested in what? Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we go on Mr. Elman's recommendation.
I second it.
Does the motion second? Any other question? Colorado, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
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 Yes.[1012.13]
They, they, they work for, for Jay hires, good product.
I think he's been with the former market.
Uh, he is doing that, and he's done some resurfacing for us, asphalt. And anyway, the, Oda wanted to piggyback their bid with us, and that's their $26,000 showing there. That was their meek and match. And then down at the bottom, that Collins Loop, that project, we had T of funds of the amount of $403,259. That was just part of this contract prorated out for that project is $286,151. If everything comes in according to the estimate numbers, that $170,000 cannot be reallocated. That goes back into that general pot. It's just because of the nature of it. Reasons for these estimate differences and that much being left on the table, so to speak, is we did these courseback estimates a number of years, a few years ago. And we, the numbers were set kind of high anticipation inflation, so they, they sell the gift cards. But based on, based on the bid we received, I recommend that we go with the Georgia Asphalt Producers at the $979,787.23.
Okay. Any other? Just one point, the tier, the money that we send back in tier. It's my understanding that at the end of this tier, the money that's sent back, that money will be dispersed according to population or...
It goes to fifth district.
Yeah.
You are not guaranteed.
Did I say what? I went to sleep.
It does get redistributed.
You try.
And we hope everybody's turning this back in.
I'm, any more?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we go on Mr. Aspel's wall's recommendation.
I'll second.
There's a motion, second, any other question? Call Robby, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
He gonna sleep, gotta give me, go to sleep, I'm...
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, let's see, we have item C, which is approval of a bid on the ambulance. Mr. Johnson?
Hi, gentlemen.
This is the man who left.
At we, uh, last meeting, we discussed, you know, sending out bids for, to replace our ambulance that we talked about. And three different companies got our bids packed, only two of them returned. They were sealed bids that were mailed back to the county office. The city clerk and myself opened it the day after the cutoff, that afternoon. And I'm sure it's in your package, we got one bid from a tailor-made ambulance for $140,720. And the second bid that received some custom truck and body works, and it was $123,136. It's $17,584 less, a custom works bid. The company is in Georgia. We purchased products from them before, and they're extremely satisfied with the quality and a lot of recommendations to consider. An ordinance bid, custom truck. It's in Woodbury. It's a kind of, it's a small, Woodbury is this factory. It's near the bridge. It's out, kind of near High Mountain, out in that part of the...
Custom truck?
Custom truck and bodywork. I actually got the last three from them.
I'll make the motion.
He's got a question. I have a question, I'll follow that.
This is lost.
I guess what?
I'm lost.
I make the motion to go.
There's a motion, there's a second?
Yeah.
From custom bodies, trucking bodies? Yeah. Custom body?
He's in New York.
Yeah?
We were, I was wondering about that one, I thought...
Yes, sir, the last, actually the last three, they put in the last three bids. This company is not just a dealer, they're a manufacturer, and they are in Georgia.
All right, we got a motion, second, the other business. Call Robby.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Item B on, on the 11th is approval of bids award for motorbender. There you are, you busy, man.
Y'all have y'all's companies.
Yes, sir.
Link over there.
I know they have, I can see it in there, Peter.
If you would, let's look at these bid numbers, it's in zero one.
It's in the back, always the back. All right, go ahead, Mr. Allen.
We received bids from Yancy Caterpillar and Flint Equipment Company. The Yancy Caterpillar bid did not comply with bid requirements, however, did list the bid numbers there. But we had specified 14-foot link blade, and all they had was 12 available. They went ahead and bid, but it did not comply. And that was for a 2005 model Caterpillar that they bid on. With a, I got prices for straight sale and with trade for our old machine. And the Caterpillar noncompliant was $127,775, straight sale or with trade, $86,107. Flint Equipment Company bid the John 2009 John Deere at $133,000 straight sale and $91,600 with trade. They did comply with all the bid requirements and actually exceeded the warranty requirement. We had required a 30-day, $150 warranty. And Flint Equipment also gave a, it's a one-year, 50, one-year, $1,000 warranty. One-year, $1,000 warranty on the machine. So, based on the noncompliance to Caterpillar and the Flint meeting, it exceeded the bid requirements, I recommend that we purchase the 2009 John Deere, $91,600 trade, link out of equipment doing this trade.
What do you want to trade? What piece of equipment you trade?
It's a, it's a motorbender.
I mean, it's not used for the one you want to trade.
Uh, well, it's, it's getting a lot of age, and it's like a 94-year model, and it's got, I don't know what hours are, but it's, it's, it did have a lot of issues. And if you drop an engine or transmission, you're looking at $25,000 each to go. Now, easily get close to that for a problem.
Reason I ask is, I heard you were giving your $40,000 record for it.
Yes, sir. And we have attempted to sell some local brands on sale and fast, and that's a full response. The last deal we worked, we've got real good trade numbers. And if you look, these two companies bidding the trades, they were within $1,000 or so.
Have you tried, I'm sorry, have you tried getting the price with alpha trade at all?
Uh, yes, and that's it, that's that.
They knew they were going to lose ways.
We, you might have to drive in, really, to that.
Drive in.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Anyway, that's, that, that's our recommendation on that, we go with the Flint Equipment, 2009 John Deere.
Okay. I make a motion that we go with Mr. Aspel's wall's recommendation.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Wright, any other questions? Call Robby.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
He also has an ID.
We do have another one in there, there was, there was two of them, there was one with an O2 bid number.
Okay.
And it's a motorbender with a sloper or hitcher, as we call it, that's that sidearm laid on it.
Yes.
And we had solicited bids on that, we got responses from Flint and Yancy. I might mention, though, that Yancy responded with just a motorbender only. They said they did not have any units available with slopers. So, they gave to the, the motorbender unit only. So, it does not comply either with the, with the requirements. They just said we did not have any offer up for sale. They're a little bit scarce, so they didn't use much. Now, Flint Equipment Company, they, they were in a similar situation, but after I found out that they decided they would try to compete by putting a, buying a new sloper and putting it on the used motorbender. And it would be pretty, pretty aggressive prices. And those three quotes that you see under Flint Equipment Company, he listed, he listed three motorbenders with slopers. There was only one left by the time we got to the point of opening the bids. And when we opened them, he did say he would hold it until it had 30 now. And it'll, it'll be gone if not. But the bottom one, at the 2010 bottom rack, John Deere, at 6,527 hours without trade, $158,000. With trade is $1,6700. Power train warranty is 12 months or 1,000 hours, which again exceeds the 30 days, $150 requirement that we have put in the bid request. It complies with all the other bid requirements. When you compare the numbers and you look, and this is essentially the same grader that we talked about, that y'all voted on a few minutes ago, but it has a $38,000 roll of sloper on it, so. So, my recommendation is the 2010 John Deere, actually, I don't know what it's available with, we suspect.
Make a motion, John Deere. How much do these things need?
A new grader without sloper, around $220, $30,000. And then you add another, I'd say $38,000 of that sloper.
What do you, what's the life expectancy on these things when you buy?
It takes, it takes about five years to put these $6,500s. The machine that we're, currently we lose one of those, it's a 94, the other one was a year or two of that. About a lot of hours on it, so we're, we're looking, we should easily get another 10 years out of these two.
That's close, yeah. You're gonna take 10 more years?
Yes, we're, we know money short, and, and for what I'm, for what I'm seeing, it's kind of like buying a used car. You get your bigger bank and shop here.
Well, I can say one thing, that they do a fine job. We, we got what, about nine motorbenders?
Yeah, nine, yes, sir.
All right, we, we still right at 500,000, over 500,000 miles of unpaid road.
We got about 500, yes, sir, 500 don't pay.
And, and, and they do excellent job of grading all of it.
Another thing you got to look at this way, anything good, paid out of date.
So, we're probably experts on getting as much we can get out of them, because those motorbenders, they run them every day. Those, because they're big guys. That's why the sheriff had to go to trucks. New cars gonna hold up.
Y'all got to make a sweep for the name.
Grab the women and pull in and drive in, everything, make a lot of screen. Don't try to scream. You got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a motion?
Second.
Mr. Copeland, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, was that with the trailer or without the trailer?
With trailer.
With trade. Will it copy that drill you got?
I got it.
Excuse me? Call Robby.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
All right. Uh, 12, item D, 12A, four minutes for South West Party. Michael resigned his term and expires, General, 16. Much pleasure? Personally, as chairman, I would, I would, I would like you to consider that we just table this until the new commissioner is elected for District Three, and let him make that appointment. Would that be okay with you?
Yeah, I agree with you there.
They don't make that much anyway, and that way he start, he'll do his own press. At least until he expires, he'll have to, he'll force my ass.
I'll make that motion when we...
All right, you want a second?
I'll say, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call Robby.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. 13, item with administrator, do you have a thing for him?
There's, you've got some stuff in your book that he left for you. Accompany the site plans, the new mental health facility. The CBDG grant application should have been submitted on April the first, and the CBDG grant is not awarded till the month of September.
Okay.
The flip of May, the auditor's final report should be completed by the end of second week of April. Once the Department of Revenue receives this report, they will cut the check. And then auditor should be coming in the...